Jump in. What's the highlight, what's the challenges that went through? Just tell us a little bit about the season.
Yeah, obviously, that we're super thankful for the support we had over the season and, you know, from teachers to principals and just again, the overall community of district definitely unmatched this year. Again, with the season, being able to win a district conference, eventually go back to Hershey for a chance at a state goal. It was a defeat in itself. It was kind of definitely super proud of what we were able to accomplish this year. Kind of again, again, with losing probably seven to eight, sort of seniors last year, I guess this year again. And then going back to Hershey, definitely one of the things we're aiming for, obviously unable to get the result. But again, super proud of what we are able to accomplish and the experiences we've had.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to jump in? He said it all, right?
Yeah. Just to write the whole playoff run, state run, just really appreciate our teachers and actually the staff for supporting us. Talking about the game with us in the hallway, you know, or debriefing or whatever, just really appreciate that. Like really kind of showed each of our team and it's been kind of playing.
On behalf of the board, congratulations again. All right, we will move on to golf.
Okay.
And I believe there's no golf students here, so we'll move on to the coach.
Okay, so our golf team was the district four double A golf champions and also the PIA double A state double A golf team silver medalists. And we have Mr. Joe House with us this evening.
Thank you.
Anything to say?
No, the only thing I'd really like to say is thank you for support district wide. A huge accomplishment for the golf team, but look at this room. We are, we are surrounded by great athletes and great support. So, thank you all.
Boys cross country, they were the district four double A runner up, PIA double A state double A ninth place team. Total team points of two hundred and forty-three. Margaret Daly. Jacob. Olivia Beatty. Grace Evans. Vera Benny. Samantha Wakeman. Jenna Beanie. Gabriela Rosenberg. Isabella Kim. Liberty Justice Dean. Coach Michael Espinoza and volunteer coaches Ashley Espinoza, Rachel Benny and Abigail Dawes.
I'd like to say thank you to everyone. We really do appreciate the recognition and taking time in what is a very busy season of our lives right now to recognize all our students and athletes. I think it was a wonderful season and though many of our girls already moved on to the next winter activity, their jobs or anything. They expressed that sadly they couldn't come here, but we thank you all so much for your support throughout the entire community. And when you look at all various sports and high achieving activities that we have in this community, it never feels as though one group is getting the short end of the spin. We always feel so well supported everywhere we go, running through the streets, getting the lows and everything. Thank you so very much for your support and we're super proud of the girls for a wonderful season with us again.
And boys cross country, district four double A champions, PIA double A state double A team champions in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Team point total was eighty-seven, which is twenty points ahead of second place. So our team members that hopefully are here tonight, Jacob Hess. Was third place overall. Thomas Hess. Jonathan Hess. Bryce Ryder. Honor Murray. Yearning Murray, Murray. Liam Shabah. Jonah Carney. And Benjamin Bailey. Head coach Ron Hess and volunteer coaches Jessica Hess and Tina Bailey.
You want to say anything before I?
I have something to talk. This year, we had the opportunity to go back to what we had two years ago. Last year, we were a little restricted on what races we could go to and where we could perform. And just we're, me and the whole team are just really grateful for you guys letting us go to these big races and getting competition. I feel like some of those things are really important for when you get to the state level because that's what the competition is going to be like there. If you don't get any practice with that, you're not going to be ready for it when it comes. So I just really appreciate the, of that in particular.
Anyone else before I jump in real quick? Just to give you a little synopsis of this team, what I've been saying to them all year and really feel that this team will forever be the team for me that, that will it. Obviously, there's a lot of talent here, but compared to some of the previous teams, the talent may not have been quite as rich, but they made a decision very early on that, that they were going to take every step they possibly could to gain that success. And they made a lot of sacrifices and they chose the harder path. A lot of times I give a lot of choice in terms of you can start here, go here, do this, and they chose that top path. And so I'm so incredibly proud of this group of young men, you know, and the legacy that they will leave. And in terms of quality of team, they probably, at least to this point, will go down as the best cross country team. We have a very rich history in terms of running, that's ever run for the school. When it was scored out, they would have been third overall even for triple A teams across the whole state. And that's just an amazing feat and for them to have done it, to make that choice. I'm so very proud of them. I want to echo what everybody else has been saying and it doesn't happen though in a vacuum without the support of the community, without support of the parents, without the hard work and the effort from them. One other thing I wanted to mention, our three seniors, if you guys would just step forward really quickly. These three guys, just some amazing stats about these guys, they've never lost a meet in the history of their runs. They're sixty-one and zero. Eight titles, four straight district titles. We already got a four straight title. So just, we're going to miss them, we're going to miss them greatly, but I'm very proud of you guys. Thank you.
And we also would like to do a special congratulations for Coach Hess. So head on back. Another certificate for you. On October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, Ron Hess was awarded the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one PIA double A cross country coach of the year. Ron has been a cross country coach, head coach with us in Lewisburg since two thousand seventeen. Ron is also head coach for spring track and field. So congratulations.
And again, on behalf of the board, to all the teams, to all the coaches, great seasons, congratulations on all the accomplishments. Thanks for coming in tonight. At this point, we always kind of dismiss people. If you guys want to skip out, feel free to stay for our meeting. All right, we'll move on to comments of the board. The first item is citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. John will go to online.
We do not have any online, but if you're interested in making a comment to the board, please visit our website at www.lasc.us. Click on the board link and then click on the survey link and enter your name, your address, and your comment, which will be read to the board later on in the meeting. Back to you, Mr. Fetzer.
Anybody here in the room, any citizens' comments to the board on agenda items? Correct. At this point, we'll do just the agenda items before we move through everything and then there's a section at the end for non-agenda items. Thank you. Anybody else on agenda items? All right, we'll move on to the board representatives' comments. Chris, I'll start with you again tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. Welcome to our new board members. Just whenever we have our students, our student athletes come in here to visit, it's just, it's a reminder of how really fortunate we are. Not just for the success that we have on, on the athletic field or wherever they're competing, but just what great kids these are. Again, having some flashbacks, I was joking with Coach Hess about, I can remember just a few years ago, his son brought a dead snake into school in second grade. And here they are competing for the state title. So, you know, good memories there, but great kids. And they really represent our district well. Just a couple of quick things I want to highlight from Kelly. Last week, we had an unforeseen two-hour delay. I will tell you that, that nothing will get my hair to stand up quicker than a phone call at six AM to say that there's flooding all over this, all over the, an area of the school. So really, I just want to say thank you to our custodians and all the people that arrived that were able to get the problem stopped and be able to get the cleanup to happen and for school to be able to happen. Because to be quite honest, when I got to see it with my own eyes, I didn't know how we were going to be able to do school. So really amazing job by all those, those folks. And just the one other thing that I wanted to comment on, at Kelly, we've been doing a lot of work around, you know, social and emotional learning. We've been doing a lot of work with our teachers and, and trying, and her PSA really helping to support us with some additional complimentary resources to go along with our second step program that we have. But we've had such a wonderful turnout of teachers that have been interested in wanting to learn more that we've actually worked with the PSA to purchase some additional materials for a professional learning area within our school library just for the staff. And what's really great about that is that there's complimentary materials that they can check out whether they want to learn more about a specific topic related to social emotional learning, or if they want to take out some additional resources and use them within their classroom with them. So it's really a great way for the teachers to expand on what they already know and experiment with a, with a few ideas of ways we can complement what we're already doing with our second step program. So a lot of thanks go out to Ashley Diggins, first grade teacher, and also to Kelly Mollinow, our guidance counselor. Thank you.
At Lintown, we have our band and orchestra concert coming up this Thursday. We will be at the high school, so we thank them for just giving us the space here to do that. Our kids are excited just to have that concert, have that opportunity to do that. They've been working hard and our teachers have adjusted their schedules and how they've done ensembles, how they've done practices. They've been very flexible with, just to increase the spacing with the kids. So they are excited to get over here and actually get them in a normal formation here for a concert, prepare them for that. But it's always exciting just to see, especially with the fourth graders, they're picking up the instruments and, and they just have the opportunity for orchestra. They don't touch a bow for like the first two months. I've gotten to experience that in my household, so that's another extra layer of excitement for me, just to see their progression, where they go. And their energy and their excitement, our numbers this year. Just in fourth grade, I think we have seventy-eight students in orchestra. So it's a really large turnout and it's just great to see because that really works its way up. And you see those results in the high school, then just with the talent we have there and everything our students do. So we're really excited for that this Thursday. For chorus, we've adjusted that and we're doing it more in, they rehearse in just two classrooms at a time, just so they can spread out more. So it's a different style of music, more classroom music than oral music. But Mr. Zeke has been recording individual classes, performing songs, and he's sending those out to the teachers so they can get that out to their parents then just to enjoy some different performances and, and we'll see where we're at. Hopefully, there's a safe way that we can do that, just to give the chorus their chance to have that kind of moment to perform for everyone down the road. We are also looking forward to brass caroling, the high school students will be coming around to the building, so that's something. The students, I don't think, know as much because they missed out a little, but the staff were so excited for that. We're really excited just to have the high schoolers come over and, and again, just for them to have that opportunity to come out where they're just marveled at by the, the students, to see these kids come in and just to have those songs for the kids, just a nice activity. And then the last thing today, staff came in and there were very elaborate snowflakes hanging from the ceilings. And if you have a chance, I posted it to the Lintown Facebook page. And it was kind of a mystery for a while, who did that, how they got there. The person does not want recognition for it, but it leaked out and I need to give a little shout out there for them. They just wanted to do something just to kind of bring, bring some energy and excitement. And they know, we, we've talked about different things that we wanted to do for students, but we really need to still keep the health and safety first. So it's kind of altered and adjusted some of our plans and they thought this is something they could do on their own that was simple. And it was amazing just to see everyone's reaction. They came in on their own over the weekend on their own time and hung these up throughout the school. So just, it seemed like a small thing, but it was such a positive uplifting thing for so many. So just wanted to give a shout out to custodial staff for that. Amongst many things that they do, there, there's such unsung heroes that really don't get credit and recognition for everything they do. So I apologize to them, but told them like, kind of blowing your cover here, you're getting recognition for this one. Because they do truly deserve it and they're so humble with everything, but just thought it was an amazing thing that they just wanted to brighten the days of kids and staff. So very appreciative and thankful for that.
Thank you. We have something in the works at the middle school starting tomorrow to brighten the day of, of folks in the nursing homes in the area where students, it's part of their service project for this quarter. We'll be making snowmen crafts with personalized positive sayings to be distributed by Eva and nurses to residents of local nursing homes with a holiday theme or seasonal theme to them, which I think it just is a nice thing to do. It isn't, you know, it's giving the kids a chance to give back and be creative. And it's the tie-in with the community that we look forward to as well. We're also in the very beginning of a food drive. In case you have kids in the building, you'd be asked to donate cans of food and, and the food products this year, we got a little more direction from the food bank. So certain types of food like canned vegetables are worth one point, but a canned meal like spaghetti and meatballs is worth two points. And canned meats were three points and homerooms are competing against each other to bring in as many points as they can to, to earn a group prize. And I thank Mrs. Van Busker and Mrs. Brininger with their service club for this quarter for bringing that. And ultimately, it's the folks on the other end of the food bank that will benefit from that. Mrs. Peck is in the middle of a competition with her kids, the what's so cool about manufacturing. They made their field trip, they took their video and they're in the process of editing video. What they're doing, they went to Play World here in town, that's their organization. And what they are to do is basically a public service announcement, plugging this company in competition against other schools with other manufacturing companies. And there'll be a set criteria that they'll be judged on and I will keep the board informed when it gets closer to competition time and maybe give you guys a sneak preview of what their end product looks like. Also, some upcoming events for middle school kids. Tomorrow night, we have our instrumental concert. That'll be here at seven o'clock here at the high school. That's our band and our orchestra, similar to what Mr. Wetzel was talking about. Next Tuesday night, we have our choral concert again here and again at seven o'clock. Difference between the two organizations, the instruments and the vocals is in the rehearsal, in the dress rehearsal actually, because the band and the orchestra haven't really gotten the chance to do an all-out rehearsal. So they'll be coming over tomorrow on buses at lunchtime to do a walkthrough and do a dress rehearsal. Chorus, on the other hand, won't have a midday rehearsal before their performance. Mrs. Heidi's asking the kids just to come early and so they can do their actual rehearsal on the stage they'll be performing on, which I think is pretty neat, but also shows that the flexibility of the, of the two different teaching styles, which is very good. And the last thing I'll say is the PSA, who's been very active this year, is sponsoring our fun night on Friday night. That's for kids, seven o'clock to nine o'clock. What they do differently, most of the fun nights dances are sponsored by the student council. This one's sponsored by the PSA, so they have their own twist, their own activities and own things in there to draw interest for the kids. And we're really appreciative of their efforts as well. So.
Thank you. At the high school, I want to talk about just two activities that are happening within classrooms that have happened and are ongoing. In Mr. Wagner's class, I was able to go in and see one of his water condensation labs. And it was ninth grade environmental science. And with the ninth graders, they're still new, I think, into some of their lab work. So as they were working through their lab work, they're working in groups and they were learning lab safety and they were going through lab safety as well as testing different types of minerals and seeing if there was water within those minerals. So as the students were going through, they were able to, you know, put their minerals in the tubes, they were able to use the buns and burners. And they were able to then, you know, do a test based upon if there was water in those minerals. So that was nice to see. It was nice to see their engagement and then them completing their report as they went through that. The other one that I would like to talk about is Hillary Crease AP Studio Art Commission Project. The commission project, there's twenty students. They have various mediums that they are working on, so they get sent out to the faculty, so there's only twenty slots available. And faculty is able to sign up for a medium of their interest. And once the twenty slots are filled, the students meet with their client, basically the faculty members, and they're able to talk about the medium and different things that the faculty might be interested in. So they could range from, you know, landscapes to ceramics with acrylic, acrylic oil landscapes could range to ceramics. So those projects are really good for kids to have the role in being like a client or having a client and then, you know, seeing what people want and then they touch base with them, they ask different questions to reach a final project. And then at the end of it, there's a possibility to like donate towards the National Art Honor Society, which then would be a scholarship, that money would be used for a scholarship for a senior. So those are two things at the high school.
Right. I'm going to, actually, my remarks kind of piggyback a little bit about on what everybody has said. Chris spoke very much to what I wanted to say about our athletes who are here this evening or those that are not because they're already involved in another sport or work or activity or musical or whatever it might be. But it always just amazes me the level of dedication, commitment, talent of our athletes and our students, because these kids, it's not just their sport that they were here representing. If you could see what they do in the classroom, on stage, you know, musically, artistically, they are such amazingly talented kids. And I know that, that everybody knows that, but it just, you know, really strikes someone, you see them all kind of collectively here representing their, their teams. I also have a shout out to one of our custodians, we are short on cafeteria staff this week. So Mr. Popowitz and I were jumping on the register. But Mr. Root, our head custodian during lunch, he was actually helping out and has done that, you know, frequently before too. So sometimes, you know, when you're, you're shorthanded and, you know, then when kids come through the line, they're like, oh, you're doing this today. It's like, hey, we all have to work together to get the job done. And so like, you know, like Eric was saying, I think sometimes our custodial staff gets a little, little hidden sometimes, they're behind the scenes, but what they're doing isn't just making sure the building is, is ready for students, but they also pitch in and do whatever they can to make, to make things work. Our concerts are also coming up. We have our instrumental concert on Wednesday evening. And then next Wednesday, we have our choral concert. And the, the last thing that I have, I was joking with a few of the kids out in the hallway beforehand. I was in Mr. RuPaul's math analysis class on Friday. And just as a little, you know, precursor into the activity, he was going to be addressing, they were doing, you know, from our generation, we think of, you know, six degrees of Kevin Bacon. Well, he was doing six degrees of Wikipedia with them that, you know, and how difficult it is to get like six degrees of separation and things as, as they're going through. So I, I had to let them know, the, the most they could get in class the other day was five, but, but I had to let them know that I got six over the weekend. So now I think it's like game on with us, but I wouldn't tell them the two, the two that I entered. So that it's basically that every Wikipedia page can be tied to another Wikipedia page through six other, you know, or, you know, however many connections. So it's just, it's just exciting to hear everybody talk about all of the different activities across, you know, the entire district and, you know, academically, athletically, musically. And just, you know, how our, our staff continues to be committed to providing our students with whatever we can and to just, you know, that we're sitting here and listening to the sound of a basketball and the squeak of sneakers and the scoreboard, that says a lot from where we were last year at this time.
Yeah, and I'll kind of echo that. I feel like last week, we heard him sitting in our stadium freezing at a boys soccer game and, you know, and actually it was before Thanksgiving and so many of you came out and watched as a community and that meant a lot to them in their journey, being there and supporting them along their way. And what a tough game that was for them with the double overtime and penalty kicks. And now we're whistles blowing, scrimmage is happening and we kick off our winter season with basketball. So as we go through and kind of work out schedules and kind of do a little bit of shuffling this week and next week because of musicals and concerts happening at the other high school. But we've been really flexible and our coaches have been wonderful. Our custodial staff, and I'll echo Paula, have been great because not only are they working, you know, during the school day, they're setting up for our games and they're like here and, you know, making sure that everything's taken care of for us on that end. So they do a great and fantastic job with that. So if you haven't seen a fall sport, please come out, see the winter sports. We got everything this winter from basketball to wrestling to swimming. Not many swimming events at Bucknell, but there will be one in January and we'll let you know when that comes up. Um, in regards to the special, I just continue to relook at programming and planning for next year with administration and staffing to see what our needs are and address those. And I'll keep it short and simple and back to you, Jordan.
Thanks. It just really, just here.
It just really, just hearing all of that, seeing the presentations tonight, the recognitions. And hearing some of the student athletes discussing, just makes me think, we talked about relationships a lot here in the district. And what makes Lewisburg a, a different place. And I think almost everybody tonight talked about relationships in one way or another. The respect that, that people have to pitch in and help one another. And just the, the relationships that you all and your staff form with the students, I think is really special. So, you know, that's kind of on my mind, hearing you guys tonight. It's just the, the relational aspect of things, which is awesome to hear. And just in general, although great things happening, thank you for sharing everything. So we'll move on to board, to the board reorganization. The first item is the election of a temporary board president. So I would open the, open the floor for a nomination to hold the position of board temporary president. This does have to be a holdover board member. So there's five board members that can serve in the capacity of, of the temporary president. Is there a nomination?
Nominate Tara Fosero.
You accept the nomination?
Sure.
All right, any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Second.
The motion moved by Dr. Jablonski, second by Dr. Zimmerman, any discussion? All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, nominations are closed. So we have Tara as our, as the nominee. All in favor of, or sorry, is there a motion to elect her as the board temporary president? Again by Dr. Jablonski, second by Dr. Zimmerman, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Tara grabbed some stuff and I will switch seats here.
This is kind of like when someone goes for colonoscopy and then I take over first. So we need to administer oath of office to our new board members.
Oh, yep, I'll read the certificate. Yep, nope, not a problem. Okay, so Union County Board of Elections, Lewisburg, Pennsylvania, certification of election, November 2nd, 2021. We, the undersigned members of the county board of elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election. Held on the second day of November, 2021 in said county. It is accepted that Heather Haynos, Kristen E. Kraus, Jamie Lyons, and Mary Ann Sigler Stanton. Are duly elected to the office of school director for the Lewisburg area school district. Signed by Jeff Reber, chairman, Preston Boop, vice chairman, Stacy Richards, secretary, and attested by Gregory A. Katharine Clark. So there's your certificates of election.
Yes, I need the newly elected board members to stand. And I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Presentation listed in the.
Yep. So now we have.
New list of.
Now have the list of board members. It's up on the screen for those of you here at home, you can look it up on our website. You'll see the list of duly qualified members of the Lewisburg area school district board of school directors as of December 6th, 2021. Mr. Jordan Fetzer, Mr. Corey Heath, Dr. Aaron Jablonski, Dr. Tara Unzeker Fosero, Dr. Virginia Zimmerman, Ms. Heather Haynos, Mrs. Kristen Kraus, Ms. Jamie Lyons, and Ms. Mary Ann Stanton. So congratulations, everyone.
Our next order of business is election of president of the school board. So I'll take, open up nominees for position of president. Any other nominees?
Nominee Jordan Fett.
Is there a second?
No seconds needed.
Okay. So we have two nominations. Do I hear a nomination to close? Motion to close, motion to close the nomination. Is there a second? Second. All in favor, closing nominations. Motion carried. So in your pockets.
In the holders, there are ballots for you.
Yeah.
So you'll write in the name of the person that you're voting for, whether it's Jordan or Virginia. And then you'll sign your name and then please pass them around here. And as your board secretary, I will read the votes out loud. No secret ballots. And then Mrs. Young will make a tally here and that will determine the new president.
Done this the past couple of years. I'd love to, Ms. Stanton had asked in previous years for the nominees to have a couple remarks. So if you could do the same this year, I'd love to have the opportunity for, to, for Virginia and I to say a couple things.
Sure, sounds good. Would you like to go first?
Go ahead, if you, I mean, it doesn't matter.
You go ahead.
Okay. So I just prepared a couple of things. I typed it up, so forgive me for reading them. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't forgetting anything. So I'll start off by saying that what our district needs right now from the board is stability. We are at a time when one third of our board members are brand new. And will need a transition period to get up to speed on current events of the board. There's currently a great amount of uncertainty with regard to issues such as COVID practices for the remainder of the year. There's a lot of uncertainty with some personnel situations in the district. As well as several pending legal matters. These delicate situations could easily go, get to tipping points with the change of leadership of the board. The stability and continuity of the board leadership would increase the chances of a positive result in many of these current situations. Continuity of the board leadership will also serve well in many facets of the district. Including relationships such as the Green Dragon Foundation. Over the past two years, I have built a rapport with the Green Dragon Foundation by serving as an advisor to their board. The work and relationships that have been built over the past two years have been very successful. And will continue to improve when I have the chance to continue in that role. Just this past week, I joined Dr. Polentok and Mrs. Moser for two meetings with the labor group here in the district. I had specifically asked if they minded if I joined. Because I presumed that having a representative of the board in these meetings would send the message, the board cares about these situations. And would like to seek a solution to the problem. I received several expressions of gratitude for taking my time to meet and hear their concerns. In addition to seeing two members of this particular group in the community. And having a wonderful conversation, not having anything to do with, with school. Outside of the, outside of the buildings. It's these types of situations that continue to build the trust and working relationships between the board and the faculty and staff. In keeping with tradition, I arranged a one-on-one meeting last January with each board member to discuss committee assignments. The 2021 committee assignments were significantly more difficult. Because of the creation of several new committees going into the 2021 year. I had eight board members, including myself, eight board members that expressed a lot of interest in the education committee. For three representative spots available. Needless to say, I was going to have five board members unhappy with me because I did not select them. However, I tried to select a diverse group, the education committee, while also providing opportunities for the other five board members. To serve in areas that fit their passions. In addition to meeting with the tradition, traditional one-on-ones. I also implemented a mid-year one-on-one this past year. Because we're at a transition period with COVID mitigation efforts. As we shifted back to in-person meetings, removed masks for unvaccinated individuals during meetings. Considered events such as in-person new faculty receptions. I recognize that many of our board members were going to have varying levels of comfort in all of these activities. I prioritize making sure that every single board member, every single board member's comfort level was both heard. And remain confidential if he or she did not feel comfortable with sharing their thoughts with the rest of the board. As a leader of the board, I have often stepped up to fulfill duties when nobody else wanted to do so. For example, when it came time for our board to nominate two delegates to the PSBA delegate assembly this year. Nobody stepped forward with the exception of Mrs. Prowse. After several attempts to get a second person, I stepped up and volunteered my Saturday morning because of the importance of this event. Just to put this into perspective, I have now served in this capacity for, for our board four times in the past six years of meeting on the board. A true leader is willing to step up and do anything to help the team, to help better the team. I felt strongly that two board members should be present because this event helps to shape the platform for which PSBA will fight. This is the best way to help move public education forward. And I wanted to be a part of that, make sure that we had two representatives. Lastly, I have proven my ability to set party politics aside. Because in my opinion, they have no place on a school board. When universal masking became a very hot topic for this school year. I didn't think twice about my vote in favor of universal masking. Because in my opinion, the universal masking was the best way to not only keep our students safe. But keep them in person, try to minimize the disruption of quarantines. Anybody who knows me knows that I will fight passionately for what I believe in regardless of the popularity of my vote. If I believe it is in the best interest of our students and our district, that will always be the way in which I vote. Regardless of how many upset phone calls and emails I receive, which there were a couple. We as a board are now at a crossroad with a decision tonight for board leadership. We have four recently elected board members that ran on the platform of being nonpartisan. I challenge all four of you to uphold your promise of your campaign and elected board president that has proven his ability to lead in a way. That follows board policy as well as respects and includes all board directors' opinions. As evidence of the few examples stated previously. I know a couple of you have not been here for all of this, so forgive me for being a little long-winded for some of these examples. I'm not naive enough to think that I am the only person who could serve in this capacity. However, I truly believe that I am the right person for this situation to continue in this role as we see our way. Not only out of the pandemic, but many other fragile situations. A change in board leadership at this time will not be healthy for our board or our district. Thank you.
Did not type up remarks, so I apologize for speaking off the cuff. Thank you, Jordan, for, for your remarks. Of the two candidates for board president before you, it is true that Jordan is the person who's done the job before. So he does offer the stability that he describes. For those who have been, you know, attending or listening in over the past year or so. I hope that you have observed that I do my best to be fair and reasonable. To be nonpartisan, to listen to the concerns that are brought to us, that are shared by the board representatives. By my colleagues here on the board, by our administrators. And to participate with this team of 10 and making the best decisions that we can make. I've served on the board for four years and in that time I've been on the policy committee, which I've been on that whole time. I've been on the wellness committee and I currently am on the education committee. Mostly I ask for your support because I believe very fiercely that public education is the cornerstone of democracy. And that what we do here matters tremendously. Not just to the people in this community, but to the people, the children we teach here will become. And I, I have faith in my ability to continue the spirit of collegiality and good humor. That has characterized my four years here on the board. And as we welcome new members, I hope that we are welcoming them into that collegial group. And I, I simply ask for your support as we continue to work together for the good of the Lewisburg area school district. Thank you. Thanks. There's no other comments or questions or just go ahead and cast your vote. And you do have to put your name on it.
Go ahead and you're ready, Mrs. Young? There is a vote for Dr. Zimmerman, cast by Dr. Jablonski. Vote for Dr. Zimmerman, cast by Ms. Haynos. A vote for Dr. Zimmerman, cast by Ms. Stanton. A vote for Dr. Zimmerman, cast by Ms. Lyons. A vote for Dr. Zimmerman by, I can't read that. We'll figure that out later. A vote for Mr. Fetzer, cast by Dr. Unzeker Fosero. A vote for Mr. Fetzer, cast by Mr. Keith. Vote for Mr. Fetzer, cast by Mr. Fetzer. A vote for Dr. Zimmerman by Mrs. Kraus. And I'm guessing this one is actually Dr. Zimmerman herself. I apologize, I have a lousy signature.
I think it doesn't count if you can't read.
So, all right, the vote is six to three, I believe, in favor of Dr. Zimmerman. So congratulations to Dr. Zimmerman, you are the new board president.
Okay, thank you. So then we move on to the election of the vice president. Are there nominations for vice president?
Nominate Corey Heath.
We don't need seconds, is that correct? Okay. Are there other nominations for vice president? Motion to close nomination. Is there a second? All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we shall cast our ballots for vice president.
There's only one nomination. You can make a motion to cast the ballot in the name of Mr. Keith for vice president.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Unzeker Fosero, all in favor, or does that need to be a roll call vote?
Um, I think, I don't think there needs to be a discussion. I think it's just one person, so there can just be a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Keith, our vice president. We can skip item G. Which brings us to the resolution to adopt the 2022 board meeting calendar. We, which we have a copy in our folders. So is there a motion to adopt this schedule of meetings as it is presented here? Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton, any discussion? All right, this can also be a voice vote, I presume. So all in favor, please say aye. All right, then we have adopted the 2022 board meeting calendar. And we can move to the resolution to designate newspapers of general circulation. Is there a motion to approve this resolution as it appears here in our agenda? For the, for the newspapers.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mr. Keith, any discussion? Hearing none.
We're not spending money yet.
We're not spending money? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We have done that and I've lost my agenda. Yes, okay, thank you. The motion to the motion to authorize the signatories is for, sorry, for the Donald Fund payroll tax as per the Pennsylvania useful code and our policy. Is there a motion to that effect? By Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we shall move on to the Sterling Act credit of 2020. Mr. Fairchild?
Yep, nope, just asked that you approve our Sterling Act credits of 2020 this evening. It's required by PDE that we file this by December 15th every year, so.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mr. Keith. Does this count as spending money?
Not technically. Somehow it relates to revenue. I'm not sure.
Explain that for.
Sure, Tom, could you explain that?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, we are. We are required to report to PDE a percentage of the earnings of residents of the Lewisburg Area School District that work in the city of Philadelphia. This is under the Sterling Act, which is like from 1920 something, and we're required to report it every year, and somehow it gets tied into our revenue, and I'm not sure how that works inside the black box of Harrisburg. So, but that's pretty much what it is.
Thank you. So that is what you were being asked to vote upon. Is there a motion to certify the Sterling Act?
I think we did.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All righty, thank you very much. And then we will move on to approving our solicitor services, retaining the services of Penelope Law Offices for our solicitor services. Is there a motion to do this? I'm moved by Dr. Enzepher Fessero, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Is there any discussion?
I would just add for the new board members, they've been our solicitor for a number of years, and I think they do an amazing job across the board. I mean, I think Kathy and Dr. Bonn talk can attest to when we have a question, they're they're very attentive, they're very knowledgeable. Yeah, responsible, responsive, so just. And their rates are not increasing.
Sorry, any further discussion? I think this does need to be a roll call vote, Paul.
Doctor Enzepher Fessero?
Yes.
Doctors Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion card.
Thank you very much. And then we will move on to old business. We return to the Poetry Path at Lynn Town Intermediate School, which those of us who were here before will remember was presented by Mrs. Rosenberg. We're asked to approve this tonight. Is there a motion to approve the poetry path at Lynn Town? Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Dr. Enzepher Fessero. Any discussion?
This is a good voting item, right? So anybody who was here last time got to see it, and we talk about how happy we are. Still like the Green Dragon Foundation to raise more money for more locations and that sort of thing.
I had the opportunity to hear Mrs. Rosenberg explaining what it is to a Lynn Town student, and the girl was very excited about it. No further discussions, and we'll have a roll call vote. Please call.
Doctors Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enzepher Fessero?
Yes.
Motion card.
Thank you very much. Our next item is new business, the Disabled Veteran Real Estate Tax Exemption. Doctor Fairchild?
Yes, so under the Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veteran Affairs, there's a program that allows disabled veterans to be exempted from all property taxes on their primary residence. We have a resident of the district who actually moved here from Montour County. She and her now deceased husband have been in this program since 2012, and unfortunately, due to the timing, the authorization for their move from Montour County to Union County had their taxes becoming exempt after July 15th. Our tax bills come out July 1st. Again, they've been in this program for quite some time, and so, under the law, the taxing authority, that's you all, are allowed to extend grace to people who may be caught in a particular clerical error. So, well, not really an error, but a timing issue. So I would ask this evening that you approve this disabled veteran real estate tax exemption to treat it as if it had been received prior to July 1st for this particular family.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please call.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enzepher Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion card.
Could I ask that an item be added to the agenda regarding a representative for Sun Tech?
Yes, we have to vote to
add the agenda.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
So is there a second to your Dr. Jablonski's motion? So, Dr. Jablonski moves to add the issue of representation to Sun Tech to the agenda, seconded by Ms. Stanton's discussion. Or do we do this by nomination or by?
Perhaps we should explain what we're doing for.
Yes, so for the, thank you for the folks who are new. Mrs. Browns was the representative to Sun Tech, and while we can take a little bit of time to sort out who will serve on which committees that are live within the district, because the business of Sun Tech does not stop, it would be behoove us and be in the best interest of the folks at Sun Tech if we can assign somebody to that role this evening. So.
Or just like we do.
Yes.
Participating districts.
Thank you. Any discussion of adding the item to the agenda?
Is that necessary, since it would make the most sense to just have the alternate serve in that position, since the alternate would know what's going on over there?
If the alternate wants to do that. I mean, I guess that's part of the discussion, right?
So I will gladly serve as the alternate, since that, again, in my opinion, that would make the most sense. So personally, I don't think that motion is necessary.
I think it does make sense, because then that's what came about.
But we're going to be voting on committee assignments, you know, in the very beginning of the year, which I'm fine with just doing that, but, you know, if we assign, if somebody's other than myself, I don't think that makes sense, because somebody new over there might not have been paying attention as closely as I have been. So, I mean, I'm happy to be the official person, but.
I think the most important thing is just that we have someone, so there's not a lapse.
Sure.
So they can continue doing what they need to do, so.
They have a meeting next week, I believe.
Right.
That's what you're saying, Jordan, is we don't need to add an agenda item.
I mean, I'm happy, in whatever capacity, I'm happy to go as the alternate, or I'm happy to go if somebody else would like it. I mean, we can do a nomination. I'm just saying, I think it would on for their behalf, it'd make the most sense if it was, again, going back to continuity and stability, it'd make the most sense to maintain that person. So I'm happy.
And that person is you.
Yeah.
You're the.
Can we officially make it you? Yeah. Yeah, that's what we want to do. Yeah, I think what he was saying is he would fulfill that until we do not commit a nomination. But I don't think you need to wait, because like when, before, when I took the IU, we did that, right? Literally, I was deer in headlights. And that was that first meeting, so.
But there is no alternate for that. But yes, I mean, that's fine.
I just think it makes sense, like, why not just do it?
Sure.
And it's also an important position, and I think it also speaks to that, you know, that we want to make sure we get that taken care of and official immediately.
Like, I guess I just want to ask, is this happening too fast? Are you comfortable moving from alternate to being the official representative? Yes, okay. All right, so we still need to vote to add this item, yes? Okay, so all in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, any further discussion? So I guess we need a motion to nominate Jordan to fulfill the role of representative from Lewisburg to Sun Tech.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Enzepher Fessero. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This can be a voice vote.
Just just to make it clear, is that through through the next meeting or two, through February, when we vote again, or is this for the next year? What are we?
I believe we're doing for the next year.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure it was clear what we were voting on.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Jordan. Then we come to new business and the Board President Report. I have my report. The Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. My report is at your place, and just summarizing, I tried this month to make my report some updates. First, to note that we appreciate Green Dragon Funds through lifting up Lewisburg, and I have some information there for you about recent expenditures from that fund. The next several paragraphs outline some of our curriculum work that's ongoing at this time, Bridges Math, Chromebook Initiative in Lynn Town classrooms, a third grade spelling pilot called The Logic of English, and then our ongoing work with math and science instruction across the district. On the backside of the report in front of you, I also wanted to draw attention. Every year, we accept a lot of student teachers from a number of colleges and universities in our area. Talk about an extra set of hands in classrooms this semester that has been very much appreciated. The quality of the student teachers, truly positive, and the role that they played, very important. But I also think it reflects well on us as a school district to be a teaching and learning institution and bring student teachers into the classroom to give them a very valuable experience in their preparation program. Next semester, we anticipate, as I mentioned here, placements in music education as well as our general education classrooms. And then finally, here in my last paragraph, I wanted to call some attention. Our new teachers have put their first semester in and have been really wonderful additions. We have new support staff, people in place, and value their good work. And I also call out the work of Josh Poplis, Stephanie Beaver, and Jeremy Wong, our new administrators who have completed a portion of their initial year with us, and they've been very valuable in their work here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there board liaison and committee reports?
You have the IU report in front of you, and also on December 16th, you'll have the LTM Center graduations, which is pretty exciting.
The Education Committee postponed until the beginning of January, was meant to meet tomorrow, but because of scheduling conflicts, will have been rescheduled to the beginning of January.
And our October meeting was also canceled, so.
All right, and then we move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to have held out and voted upon separately? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? We'll call, please call.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Enzepher Fessero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
And then we come to director's comments. For the new folks, this is an opportunity to comment on anything that has come up during the meeting or that you feel you would like to make a comment on. So I will start with Ms. Stanton.
Some things just don't change. I just want to start on that side, because Kristen's new. You guys, I'm so excited to hear about the concerts, being in person. I'm hopeful that the middle school concerts will eventually be in person, the chorus. They are in person, right? Was it Lynn Town, and that you were giving some of them virtually? It just, this is my favorite time of year with concerts. It brings back all sorts of good memories, and I know that for the community, to see our kids, and as you all said, like, our athletes, their singing, and our, you know, other kids who are just shining in that space and learning about being part of an ensemble. It's a really important and exciting time, I think, for the community. I think it was great to see the athletes here, and I think a lot about the lessons that they learned. And I know they were disappointed, the boys, to get second place, but let me tell you what, that's an incredibly valuable lesson, right? They they're a strong and talented and smart group of young men, and you don't always win, even when you're Lewisburg. And I just think they are, have shown such grace and humility as have all of the teams, whether they came in first place or not. So that was just really, see, super excited for golf, because that was cool. And just all of the great things that are happening, the social, emotional, professional development that that staff were able to take advantage of at Kelly. I'm just really glad to hear all about that. And again, just grateful for everything that the Green Dragon Foundation does for us. So thank you.
So first, with Kelly Elementary, I just really want to say the communication was really great this week with the two-hour delay, though I was really upset to not see snow, because that's usually what the six o'clock phone call means. But the communication was really great with that, with letting parents know what was going on and how their kids were going to be getting to school with the two-hour delays. Also with the band concerts, also, I have a flute player at home, so we're very excited. It's interesting to see someone go from not even knowing how to make a sound in an instrument to now they're doing songs and being able to see them as a whole band. I was also really excited to hear about the middle school with the competition they're a part of with going to Play World. I think that's awesome at such a young level, to be able to go into the manufacturing companies and really see, I think, with as much as we talk about Sun Tech, to really be giving those opportunities to kids at a younger age to see what other options there are at times, and ones that are right in their backyard. So I think that's a really great thing that they're doing. And with that, and also kind of linking to the art commissioning happening at the high school of them creating the, with the competition, and then with the art commissions of seeing how people are working towards a client atmosphere, which I think that is really important, because sometimes kids don't kind of get that link of where an interest that they lie might help them after school. So I think that that's great to see the ways the teachers are kind of making those connections, so kids can kind of start thinking about what they want to do as they're getting up in ages in the school and graduating. So I just think all the things are really great that you guys have presented tonight.
It was great to see all the students back, as I said earlier. It's always exciting to see them. Just, it's incredible to see the accomplishments that our students achieve and just all the successes that they have. So it was great to see them. Congratulations to Mr. Hess. That's also an incredible feat to get that accolade. So congratulations to him and his whole family who stood up here. So, again, very awesome to see. It is a shame, in my opinion, to see campaign materials saying about a nonpartisan position or a nonpartisan group of people running for the board, and the first action is to create some instability with the board, and, you know, I hope that's not a trend that would, that our board is going down. It is a very known fact that one of the biggest reasons why a superintendent would leave would be because of instability of the board. And I certainly hope that we can come back from this and and move in a direction where we come together as a team, because I don't believe we're there right now, and I hope the community understands that that we'll bounce back from this. Virginia, I wish you the best. It's a lot of meetings. I have all the confidence in the world, you can do this. I don't think anybody doubts that. It's a lot of meetings during the day, including this Thursday at 1:00 with the Green Dragon Commission, so I hope you can make that. Again, just for continuity and and moving forward, so that's all I have.
I'd like to echo what people have said about our amazing sports and the extracurriculars in general. Just the strength of these activities and the people who lead them, like Pro Chess and others, especially this year and past year, is really just dynamo. I mean, I think that our kids need these extracurricular activities to keep them moving forward, and sometimes the school day can probably get a little long, you know, during the pandemic, and so being able to practice the instruments even without the bow, and, you know, get out on the playing fields and and just let it all hang out, I think, is vital. So thank you for, to Pro Chess and to everyone who's involved. So thank you for, to Pro Chess and to everyone who's involved in keeping these thriving activities for the kids. Enjoy hearing about the middle school taking things over to the nursing homes, that's a delightful thing to do this time of year. And to the custodians for all their, the double duty they're doing in the cafeteria, and it sounds like making snowflakes and whatnot. Thank you.
I did other comments, I, I want to make a specific comment about the boys soccer team. I have two boys playing, and we got to experience winning a penalty kick and losing a penalty kick. And I have to say that our boys shined on both sides. I know that Midwest, you know, that was a really tough loss for them, it was a tough win for us. And afterwards, I saw multiple boys from our team go over and hug their boys. I can't say the same after the state final. It was, it was a totally different atmosphere, and I know that we know the Midwest boys, so that's probably the biggest difference. But at the same time, I love that our boys rose above, and I appreciated that. And anyone that followed it knows the exact details of it and how they supported that teammate that really needed it. And it was just, it was, it was a great thing, and you're right, it's a learning experience. And the fact that they have the silver medal, not the gold, I said to my son, I'm like, this is not a disappointment. This is, this is a major accomplishment in and of itself, and someday you'll realize that. Maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but you will, so. But I do appreciate Coach Kettlewell, he was Coach of the Year last year, I believe. He's a phenomenal coach, phenomenal teacher, phenomenal man, and I wish he would have been here to see how great a turnout it was for the boys, too. So I just say thank you to him, and Bren Ziegler was a great ad, also, very stand-up guy, and I'm really glad my boys are a part of that program. But I also appreciate things getting back in person. And I do want to shout out to Mr. Popwitz, because my kids do come home and say that they really love some of the things that you're doing in high school, specifically you. Your name's been mentioned multiple times without me saying what's going on. So I appreciate the things you're doing to make a difference and make my kids, at the minimum, my kids feel safe and secure at school, so I appreciate that.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yeah, I'm, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you to everyone for the warm welcome. I think really kind of the theme of tonight, it seems like, is just the people who make up this district, whether it be the students or whether it be the staff. And that's one of the reasons, among many, that I wanted to do this job, is I think we, as a district, are so lucky to be made out of so many amazing people. And I really look forward to working with all of you. I have to shout out Ashley Diggins in first grade. I am fortunate to be a parent of a former first grader of hers. And I have always wished that what she does in her classroom could spread through the whole school and frankly, the whole district. So to see the baby seeds of that being started, what she does with social, emotional learning is phenomenal. My first grader had her during the pandemic year, and he did so well and has done so well going forward because of the way she handled that transition to remote learning on Friday the 13th. So I think that's amazing, and, you know, thank you, Mr. Rule, for supporting her in doing that, and all the teachers that are jumping on that bandwagon, because it is much needed right now.
I think a lot has already been said tonight, I would echo a lot of the very positive comments that you've all shared. Jordan, thank you for your leadership, Virginia, that's delicious hearing your new role.
Thank you. Dr. Fairchild?
Yes, I echo everything that's been said this evening, and yes, thank you to the shout-out for the, our custodians, our maintenance, our food service, and our bus drivers, who are all doing a lot of extra work with the shortages that we have right now. So we are very grateful for those who are continuing to serve.
Dr. Jawlinski?
Yes, I would echo the same, I'm hearing about custodians stepping in and food service workers helping out, and you all helping out for food service workers because, you know, of the shortage and the bus drivers. Like, these, these things that keep coming up, but the fact that people are willing to pitch in and really help, I think continues to tell that same story. I did have one small tip, and Dr. Fairchild can correct me, but I, I just had to look up Quaker Valley to understand more about them. They have nearly the same student population that we do. We have a $37 million annual budget, they have a $49 million annual budget. Please look that up and correct me next meeting if I'm incorrect, but.
Sounds about right.
So we should be paying Mr. Peddwell $10 million. But seriously, welcome to all the new members. Tonight might have seemed like a rapid fire, because they're not the, these weren't the best kind of, sometimes we get action items that are really a lot of fun to talk about, because they're initiatives in the district that we, you know, are like, very excited to celebrate. And, yeah, I'm, thank you to Virginia for being willing to, to serve in this role. Thank you to Jordan for having served, and thank you to Cory for being willing to continue in your vice presidency.
Thank you for all your comments, just like everyone else said, it's good to see the kids and hear what they're doing, hear all the initiatives that are going on. Welcome to the new board members. What Karen said is very true, not everybody gets excited about the Sterling Act, but I promise there will be interesting things to talk about at some point.
Sheds and vans.
Jordan, thank you for your, for your service. Best, best to look to you. Feel free to, if you think I can help you in any way, just let me know. And to the whole board, thank you for your vote of confidence tonight. Happy to serve.
Certainly, congratulations to our new school directors, and congratulations to Virginia and Cory for continuing on. Cory, and thank you, Jordan, for your services as our board president, and also now Sun Tech. Those are some very big shoes to fill there for Mrs. Kraus. What, just wanted to, you know, take a moment to mention the Green Dragon Foundation, and they had their dedication for the gazebo at the high school over the holiday weekend, and I'm finally able to stop saying that word over and over again, it's been rather arduous. Getting that set up and having that occur on time for the prom, so the kids could have a lovely place last year where they could have their prom pictures announced, it's a permanent fixture, and it'll certainly be there for, for students to enjoy in certain, in memory of a student who is no longer with us. I also wanted to, you know, just notice the difference between last year and this year, where we did this on Zoom, where we just had the recognitions and the students' pictures, and we just rapidly went through their names, and it felt so impersonal. And, but that was the best that we could do, we're just happy that the students had a season. But to see so many athletes come, and knowing that many of the kids that were not here were committed to some other activity or other service project that they're doing, that they're certainly here with us in spirit. Our school district has always done everything that it could to support its students, and that would not be possible without a dedicated administration, staff, and the parents, the community, and this board, so thank you.
I would like to echo a lot of the sentiments that have been expressed, in particular, I, I was making a list, and I have student athletes, and I have music, and I really always am eager to hear about the SEL initiatives, and, and then I realized, listening to all of the comments, those aren't separate items. I think what we do so well here in Lewisburg is that all of those are the same thing, that the success of our athletes is, is, is social, emotional learning. And as so many of you have said, the ways in which these kids are on the playing field, and then they're on the stage, and they're singing, and they're swinging golf clubs, and, you know, I'm really proud to be part of a district where these things are all so tightly bundled together, and I'm, I'm proud of our kids, and I'm proud of the work that you do, and, and, you know, the full range of staff and faculty. And it seems important to give the custodians in particular a shout-out this week, from the extraordinary efforts at Kelly, to the lovely efforts with the snowflakes and everything else in between. I would like to very much welcome our new board members, and I would like to thank Cory for his continued service. I would especially like to thank Jordan for his service as president. I will be holding you in my head and following in your footsteps, and I'm grateful for the model that you've set. Thank you for your confidence in me. I do vow to do my very best to hold us together as a unified team of 10, serving the needs of the district as best we can. So thanks very much to you all. Now is the time when we turn to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. John, if you want to start us off with anything online?
Sure, we'll take a look here. Take a quick look here. Nope, doesn't look like this person actually, I don't think this is a real comment. Nope, no actual comments online, so.
Okay, thank you, and I believe we do have comments in the room. So if you, if you would like to make a comment, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, state your name and address, and share your comment with us.
My name's Molly Clay, I live at 137 Stein Lane. Welcome to all of the new board members. I'm here tonight with Shayna Supatina to advocate for the creation of an autism support classroom at Lindtown Intermediate. We stated our case in a letter signed by 10 parents of special needs children that was sent to the board on November 7th. In our letter, we expressed our concern about how special needs children transition between buildings within the district when staffing and space vary significantly. The transition from Kelly Elementary to Lindtown Intermediate specifically represents a transition that is made even more challenging due to a well-established autism support classroom at Kelly and the lack of an equivalent at Lindtown. In order to create a more streamlined continuum, we suggest the creation of an autism support classroom and an autism support teacher position at Lindtown. Since we sent our letter to the board, Shayna and I have met with administrators, principals, and teachers to further discuss the needs of our sons specifically, to construct a transition plan for moving from Kelly to Lindtown, and to just, to discuss how to make both schools more similar in their support for special needs students. It has become clear from these meetings that the district has been very responsive to the needs of atypical students in the past and has shown great flexibility in meeting complex needs. However, at this point, we encourage the board to consider some longer-term solutions rather than continue on the path of addressing needs on a case-by-case basis. When special needs families are consistently put in the position of asking for exceptions and adaptations, the perception of special needs children as requiring more work is only exacerbated. On the contrary, with appropriate staffing and thoughtful planning, special needs students are more seamlessly integrated into the fabric of the school, and it is this outcome that we see. As budget discussions begin, we strongly encourage the board to swiftly approve the creation of an autism support teacher position to oversee an autism support classroom at Lindtown. The creation of such a position and a classroom could improve the transition process from Kelly to Lindtown and provide essential, essential support that mirrors and extends what is offered at Kelly. We hope to continue to work with administrators to achieve this goal.
Thank you very much. Are there additional comments from citizens on non-agenda items? Thank you very much to Ms. Clay for your remarks, and I think all that remains is a motion to adjourn. Moved by Dr. Jawlinski, seconded by Dr. Unzicker Ferro, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.